All right, everybody's seeing the agenda. There's no changes or amendments to the agenda. Can we give a motion to adopt the agenda?
We adopt the agenda as presented by Mr. Preston.
Second.
Second. By Ms. Miller, Hall of Fame.
Hi.
All right, Dr. Lee.
Yes, sir. You all have had a chance to review the agenda. And on the agenda, we have the first item of business is the... Dan's not in yet. Get him called up. Give me a chance to catch up to it.
We'll be looking at the minutes. We'll be looking at the values.
Yes, sir. Y'all go ahead. The minutes are on the table and y'all had a chance to review them. Leave questions about the minutes. If there's no questions, comments, amendments to the minutes, then we will place those on the consent agenda for the regular monthly meeting. Next on the agenda, we have the financial reports. And this is our year-end financial report, so we will be closing out the books on FY '20. And we're going to present that to the board tonight. And I've signed off on with the State Department through their system, and so these are the final financials. Ms. Yon, I'm going to let you walk us through those.
Yes, sir. These are the final financials as of June 30, 2020. And it shows that we began the fiscal year in July of 19 at $14,950,260.85. Total revenues for the fiscal year were $73,621,725,000... Let me start over. $73,621,725.81. The total expenditures for the fiscal year were $69,222,268.56. We end the fiscal year strong this year at $19,349,718.10. But due to the situation this year with the pandemic and the governor's order to close school back in March, we had some savings in several different areas of our departments. You know, with our maintenance, we had some savings. With our subs, we had savings. Travel, conferences, utilities, we had some savings that accounted for some of this at the end of the year. But I do want to mention, you know, for the fiscal year '21, we budgeted for the 10% reduction in state revenue. That accounted for about, you know, $6 million. We will receive 2.6 in CARES funding that will offset some of those salaries and benefits that were in our general fund. So we will have to use some of our reserves the upcoming school year to make that difference in that state funding.
When we have an idea... I mean, I know what they projected, but when we have an idea of maybe an actual realistic revenue from the state... I mean, I know they're projecting us to be 10% down, but...
Well, they would help.
So they're going to withhold that.
I don't know.
It doesn't matter what the revenue comes in.
No, yeah, that's their annual budget.
Yes.
They budgeted for us that budgeting that reduction.
Okay, okay. So that was not... I got you.
But their revenue was looking good.
Well, that was my question. I was wondering if maybe we would end up, and I guess at this point, if that's what... If that's the way it's done, you know, maybe next year they would adjust something. I was just curious if the revenue, or if the revenue came in higher than they thought with that, if they best... You're saying if that's the way the budget is, then they would...
I would think they will roll that into their fund balance up there.
Oh, that was my question.
Our request is for them to fully fund QBE next year. And also to hold harmless for reduction in students this year, if there is a reduction in students, to hold harmless. So that's... So, yes, sir, good question. The next budget or financial document, Ms. Yon.
Okay, this is the four-year comparison. So compared to last fiscal year, FY '19, you know, we increased our fund balance by approximately 4.3 million. But again, you know, we'll be using approximately 3 million in the reserves to offset that reduction in state revenue.
Shane, you're having some kind of technical challenge?
I'm calling now. I'm just trying to... Wait a little bit, I'll wind down at the same time.
Oh, there it is. Oh, it's that one over there, it's frozen. I thought the one behind me was too.
I'm sorry.
Okay, this is the detailed financial report. The first part is our revenues. You can see our TAVT and our local revenues were up this year. And this reflects our portion here at the bottom of $73,621,725.81. Moving on, these are our expenditures for the fiscal year. And you can see in some of the areas where we've had, you know, some savings at the end of the year. And at the end, this reflects our total expenditures of the $69,222,268.56. And then you can see that we end the fiscal year with $19,349,718.10 fund equity.
What's needed next?
Okay.
Will you finish the year yet?
Okay, this is July. Yes, okay. This is the final financial document for the first month in the fiscal year '21. And it reflects where we began this fiscal year. And then we're at, we ended this month, or the month of July, at $19,195,221.79. And the revenues and some of the expenditures for the month of July reflected, you know, as of June 30, they're accrued. Here is the comparison, shows where we were in FY '20. And again, the detail of the month of July. But the revenue in July is just, we have, we received some state revenue. A lot of our revenue for the month of July is accrued. And here's our expenditures detail. So for the month of July, the total expenditures was $1,356,671.56.
Got the August.
And here is our August as of August 31, 2020. Shows where we began our fiscal year. And at the end of August, the fund equity is $18,357,891.29. And again, there's some salaries and benefits that are accrued here in the month of August. September will be our first month with all our salaries for that fiscal year. This is our comparison compared to last year. Our spies for the month of August, we were slightly down compared to the last month, but we're still... It's been quite strong as of May.
Last week, I was looking at the book every morning about the state revenue, Ms. Ross, was that much of the word being any other year?
Yeah, state revenue is actually up more than last year. So hopefully it doesn't come back. Yeah, locally, the spending has been pretty strong, stronger ever.
Well, all four of those months are the highest month. But we've had a...
Yeah.
And now you have to back out the TAVT on that as well.
Looks like it didn't really go up to 20, 19 points.
I think when that chick's way opens up too, you're going to see it. But there's no questions. That's the financials. And we'll ask the board to approve those on the consent agenda. The last item under this area is the audit report, FY '19 audit report. And the state auditors came in last year and came in in October, and they spent about two months with us, coming through everything and looked at every department and every account. And so we're presenting the audit to the board tonight. So I will say it was a very, very good audit, probably. It's cleaning all of this I've ever seen, so. Next item on the agenda is the Coffey County 21st Century Community Learning Grants. And we've got Bull Brown here representing the Boys and Girls Club and the 21st Century Grant here. And Ms. Smith is here with him to present the 21st Century Learning Grant funding.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lee. Thank you, Board. Once again, I want to thank you guys for approving the grant. We are in our second year of the new five-year grant. And I've got some exciting news for about our first year. Our numbers continue to climb, and we have been more than successful. I mean, it's a blessing to see what our kids and our staff are doing at the club. The first little snapshot, these are our 11 objectives. And I'm proud to say for the fourth year in a row, we've had 100% on our audit. And we have met all of our deliverables. And as you can see, the very first objective, 60... We, as a goal, 60% of our students will maintain or improve an A or B average in reading. And we surpassed that with 77%. The next item was in math. We had 60%, but, you know, we had 75% of our students. The next one was science. Again, we had 72% of our kids either maintained an A or B or improved in those areas. Of course, the next three deliverables were not measurable due to the COVID situation. So in goal two, it talks about behavior. This is measured through surveys from teachers and staff. And our goal was for 90% of our students to attend school less than, or to not miss more than 10% of their school days. Well, 100% of our students missed less than 10% of day school. So that means we're keeping them in school because they know if they don't go to school, they can't come to the club. So that's a huge success for us. The next one, 70% of our students' behavior will improve. Well, we had 84% of our kids, and this is our daytime teachers letting us know that because of our program, 84% of our kids improved in their behavior. The next objective was 70% will improve in their class. We had 83%. The last two objectives is dealing with our family service. Not only do we serve our kids, but we serve our families. And we set a goal of 60% of our families will at least attend two family nights. Well, we had 68% to at least attend two of our family events. And then 85% of our parents, we wanted to gain knowledge at our parent events. But we had 98% of our parents say that they gained some kind of knowledge at our parent events. And that goes to the success of our family service coordinator, who I'll introduce in a minute. All right. This is just a snapshot of the evaluation. As you can see, we have 160 in the top left-hand corner. We have 168 kids enrolled in our program. Our grant calls for 130, but I always like to over-enroll for making sure that we can keep our ADA up. And of course, we had 168 enrolled. We had an average day of attendance of 122 kids a day down there. We're providing a snack, providing education enrichment programs, provide them a supper. So we had 122 kids at our program every day. Again, I've already talked about the top right-hand corner with the 11 objectives that we made 100% on. The bottom one, again, is talking about the bottom left, excuse me, talking about the attendance and keeping the kids in school. The bottom right is something that was very interesting. We had to meet on it. This is talking about improvements in different grades. Of course, this talks about our teen center, which we opened up with this new grant, versus our Boys and Girls Unit down there at Jackson Street. And the ELA, it shows that the one in green is the teen center. So they had 84% that either improved or maintained an A. But if you look at math, the Boys and Girls Club is beating them, if you want to say. It has improved more than the ninth graders, but, you know, these are kids getting into high school, and this math is a little different. So that's something that we've looked at, that 48% of them, only 48% of them improved or maintained their A or B. So that's something we're going to focus on. And also science. The K through A improved more than our teen center, so that's something that we're going to focus on this year. The last page is, of course, some other spotlights. And of course, when I talk about the top left-hand corner, IDA, average day of attendance is 122. That's one of the best in the state of Georgia. We, my ERES that comes and visits and makes sure site visits, he is excited to come see us. He knows we've got something very special going on in Coffey County. Some other highlights, the school day teachers and parents agree that improved academic performance was a resort resort of our program, the 21st Century Program. So not only did we work with academics, but we also social and emotional needs. And we use that through our mentor programs, our live skills, and of course, of course, our virtual programming. With COVID hit, of course, we were one of the first virtual programs, 21st Century programs in the state of Georgia. As soon as schools shut down, administrative staff met, and we was concerned and worried about our kids. How are they going to get help? And the state allowed me to go ahead, and we come up with a plan, and I think we executed pretty well. We had about an average of 45 to 50 kids daily during the summer, or, excuse me, during the after-school portion. And it was a very, very successful... We, you know, we had to think outside the box and do some cool things with them to keep them engaged. But, you know, my staff, I have awesome staff, can't brag on them enough, but they come up with some cool and interesting things to keep our kids engaged. Right-hand side is just a, you know, part of our surveys. We allow parents to write something, and, you know, that tells a lot that, you know, how much my staff loves our kids. You know, we've got a huge heart, and no doubt that the BGC program is what, you know, helped her son. So the bottom left, of course, is some of the surveys of the school. And of course, the bottom right is parent satisfaction. We got 100% of parents are satisfied with our program. And one of the things that I highlighted is like a family there, and we truly are like a family. We love those kids. That's one thing that when I interview them, if you don't love my kids, I don't want you. Because I want you to build a relationship with them, and they know that. And with that said, I want to introduce Ms. Cece, or as better known as Mama Bear. I'm Papa Bear, and this is Ms. Cece, my family service coordinator. And I wanted her to share a little bit of things of what's going on now at the club. Because of course, it's with this COVID, it's very different, but our kids are still enjoying it, and we're keeping them safe. So, Ms. Cece?
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Thank you, Board, for inviting us to come and share what is going on at Boys and Girls Club. I want to talk about a little bit how are yous going, attendance. The school hit on some of it, it's around 80% due to some of our children are virtual. We put out where we asked who's going to be virtual, who's going to be face-to-face. So if they're going to be, if they weren't going to be face-to-face, they weren't able to come to the club. So all our children that are face-to-face are being able to come to the club. So we got about 80%. I want to share some things, the ways that we're keeping our children safe at the club. Every day, Ms. Bull and the bed company, they come in and they're spraying and sanitizing each of the rooms, the bathrooms, our kids cafe, the lobby area, really just the whole club daily, the Jackson, and I guess also at the ninth grade. When our children gets off the bus and they come in the door, their temperature is checked, and we also make sure they're masked up. Our kindergarten third, we chose them eating in our kids cafe. We have eggs on their seats in the kids cafe to keep them socially distanced. So they eat their snack and their dinner there. Fourth through eighth graders, they eat their snack and dinner in the classroom, where they are socially distanced in the classroom as well. We have plexiglass on the tables in all of the classrooms where they have their own little area, their own little space. So they're not coughing or spreading germs over their peers in the classroom. Also, in a middle school classroom, since it's such a strong classroom, we, the staff decided, and Ms. Bull decided to divide those students up. We have some that are in the classroom, that they do have plexiglass as well, and some are in our games room. So we are not using our games room at all, but only for class instruction. I've got notes here, so if I get anything. When they go outside, it's only a couple of groups go outside at a time, and we have an outside zone. So they only go in their designated zone areas. They have their own playground equipment, each class does, and it is color-coded. So after they're done playing with it, staff sprays it, cleans them off, and stores them for the next day. As far as me being a family service coordinator, we were advised to use the G-Suites platform. I know when we shut down, I used Zoom, but after I've been told we're going to use the G-Suite. So I just had my quarterly parent meeting using Google Meet. So we're using our Google Meet, so we have hangouts for our parent meetings. And... We also partner with the college. We have five college students that are working with us. They get background checks done. We're also making sure that they're protected too. And they're masking up. We take their temperatures as well. So they're there to help our children with homework and with their enrichment activities. They help with serving the snacks and dinner. We also use them as well to sanitize our bathrooms, handles and fixtures. Both of our programs and events that we're going to have, we usually have people come in. But since of the COVID, we're going to have our programs virtually. And some of our programs we're planning to have is our self-intense course. I know Ms. Bull talked with someone coming in and teaching that. We feel that this program will be important for our children because of our society has changed. And there are lots of human trafficking and, you know, children being abducted. So we feel like this program will help our children, you know, to protect themselves. So we feel like this program will help our children, you know, to protect themselves. Also, I have a fellow college classmate, I attended Florida State University, and his name is Dr. Hodges. And I don't know if anybody's familiar with National Geo Law, but he's one of the doctors on the show Critic Fazers, Hunter Vets. And, well, actually, I went to school with both of them. And, but Dr. Hodges is one I talk to him the most. So we're looking at getting him to come in, talk with the students about his profession and how he got to be on National Geo Law. Another event we have coming up, and it's coming up next month, is our light song at the school. And that will be on Thursday, October twenty-second. We have partnered with the Kind Corporation and they make the kind bars. So only Ms. Bull and I have taught, but we'll present this to the staff at our staff meeting. But we're looking at making hoodie bags at the club for our healthcare workers at the Coffey Regional Medical Center. They have worked diligently tirelessly around the clock since we, this COVID-nineteen came in our area. And so we felt like to pay it forward, to give back to our community. We're going to explain to our children about what we're doing, why we're doing it, so they can understand and know that. And we want to teach our children how to give back and not just want themselves. But, and they're good at it. They, when we've done it in the past, we've done it for a summer camp before, and they really, was really involved, coming up with a lot of ideas of what we can do to give back. So we are going to present this to them and doing this for our healthcare workers. I wanted to say also, if you can think of any businesses or anybody in our area that would like to talk with our students, please feel free to call us. We could set up something virtual.
That's great.
I want to thank y'all for what you have done. I just couldn't help but think back to, there was a small group of community members that were meeting over at the South Wire Plant in the morning time around seven A M about eight years ago and planning a Boys and Girls Club. And we would meet, we didn't even have a facility, didn't have anything except for a group of people who wanted to see something happen. That group stayed the course, they got a facility. The City of Douglas donated the facility and then that group kept working and was fortunate to have you all join and join the club and the staff and to agree to work with this program. And we've just been blessed to have your leadership and all of y'all who were involved. Please go back and tell your staff how much we appreciate everything that y'all have done because with your work, you brought together that just a small group won't have a Boys and Girls Club and you've made it, I'd say, as fine a Boys and Girls Club as we could have ever asked for. And to be able to get the grant and go through a five-year cycle of that grant funding for two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year, whatever it is, it's a two-point-five-million-dollar grant, I think, and then be able to reapply and get the grant again, and now we're in year two of it, it's just been tremendous. Y'all are making a difference in the lives of boys and girls in Coffey County. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right.
Thank you. And I did want to mention something when you said that, Dr. Leece, you know, we're not only in Georgia now, we are getting national attention. This past year, I was able to speak at a national conference and share what we do at Coffey. I had to speak at a state conference twice and be present. So I am getting the word out and I've had other clubs from other states and locally from Georgia call, what are you doing down there, Bull? So we are getting notarized in other places and thank you guys for supporting us.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Hey, I did, I wanted to say something on that that I heard. I want to thank you all and appreciate y'all for not being so relaxed and making sure that the children wear their mask. You know, that was something that was important, key information that you bought in several times, that you make, you make sure that the children wear their mask and you make sure that, you know, who are you partnering with, they wear their mask because this is so important now. And a lot of times we relax on that. So thank y'all for that, just to make sure that those children and everybody in the facility wear their mask. So.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bull. All right, the next item on the agenda is the summer, the Seamless Summer Option Review. And this is a compliance report we have to get in front of the board and have you approve this audit.
Last October, we began a three-part audit that the school nutrition program has to go through. We completed the fall audit and I reported to you in the winter that review. The summer, we were required to complete the second audit, which is our Seamless Summer Audit. It was conducted, even though we were in a pandemic, it would still happen. The review was over the Roundtree Community Center, which is one of our partners with the Seamless Summer Program. And I am pleased to report there were no findings at all with that audit. So that was very good news for me. I do want to take a minute to read the commendations from that report from the state. They said that the site accurately completed all paperwork and the school nutrition directors committed all required documents in a timely manner, making the status review process quick and efficient. It was a pleasure to work with this school food authority. And the last comment leads into what I'm about to talk about next. It said, "All Coffey County School Nutrition Staff are to be commended for their tireless efforts to see that children in their district have access to nutritious meals during the COVID-nineteen pandemic." And Dr. Leece asked me to give you just a brief report on the COVID pandemic. So I have just a little quick slide for, to show you what really did happen when the pandemic started and we actually redid our whole entire program. That's the slide. Did it not get uploaded?
That's not the letter.
No, it's the PowerPoint. It might be the commendation. Did you just have that? I can talk about it. It's not there. It's on the top. No.
It's an under system update.
I will just briefly tell you, and I'll make sure you get copies of the slides. When the pandemic began in March the eighteenth, for us with meal service, from that point until the summer, the meal program was over, our staff served five-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-two meals during that timeframe. So we were very, very proud of that. But it wasn't just our staff. It was teachers, parapods, Mr. Preston volunteered in packing meals, our community partners like the Roundtree Center. We had churches donate as well, and our transportation department. They tirelessly delivered meals for us non-stop. They loaded, they helped load the buses, maintenance department. So when I say it was a community effort, I am very excited to say that that was not just a school nutrition effort. It was the entire Coffey County community who helped us reach that. And that is just unimaginable that we would serve that many meals in that short amount of time. So I was very excited. And I will get you copies because the pictures are really cute of some of the kids that actually got to enjoy those meals. So I'll send that to you.
Thank you, Ms. Bull. Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the system update. I wanted to update the board on the COVID snapshot that was completed on Friday of last week. You'll see that we had seven-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six students enrolled. We had five students on Friday with positive COVID-nineteen. We had ninety-two students absent due to possible exposure. And then Coffey County School System employees, one-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-eight, employees absent due to positive COVID-nineteen tests, that was two. And then employees absent due to possible exposure, thirteen. We're doing this snapshot, we're completing this snapshot around eleven-thirty and trying to have it published for the public by noon. So this was as of noon on Friday of last week. We'll be compiling another report tomorrow at noon. I do want to report that we will have elementary students who are coming back to school, who are choosing to no longer go virtual, and we will have a hundred-and-seventy-three elementary students, kindergarten to fifth-grade students returning to our elementary schools. When will they return, Ms. Miller?
October twelfth.
October twelfth. And that is our update, system update. All right. The next item on the agenda is Naviance Curriculum Solution. We have Ms. Miller here to present to the board purchase request for Naviance.
If you remember back in February, I presented this to you all for the first time, but we never followed through with it because of the shutdown. So I just wanted to briefly review and remind you what this is. This Naviance is a college, career, and life readiness framework. And it outlines those six competencies there that six, twelve students should have exposure to achieve to become college, career, and life-ready. And this program is a program that provides, it provides a lot of things, but it provides lots of activities and videos and lessons for counselors to use, teachers to use for advisement, those kinds of things. And we'll talk about that some as we go through. So the way Naviance works, there are components in Naviance, as well as we have Usines, where students can figure out who they are, what their interests are, self-discover. And then they move from there to career exploration. There's lots of ways for them to explore careers through the Naviance platform. Then do some academic planning. We have, if you think back to several years ago, the Bridge Act was passed from House Bill four-hundred, I think it was, and I'll talk about that a little bit. Advisement is part of that Bridge Act. So this would have academic planning opportunities in there for counselors when they needed students. All the time that they are doing their academic planning and college planning, they're developing, there's lessons in there to develop soft skills and non-cognitive skills that directly aligns with our employability skills that is directly aligned to our strategic plan. So it has student impact, it has counselor impact, and of course, it has district impact. It is that one platform to engage families and with resources for their students, for their children, as they're planning, starting in the sixth grade. So Naviance, as I said, is a college, career, and life readiness platform. It is a resource to fulfill the Bridge Act. We did have, up until June thirtieth, the G C I S platform, but that is no longer available. So a couple of the counselors have, are excited that we possibly may get this upon approval for them to have because it'll be a way for them to very easily and simplistically plan career lessons and activities for their students. That is a requirement of the Bridge Act. Of course, as I said, academic planning, college planning, some of the lessons are how to fill out a FAFSA form. Once they decide, maybe I want to be an engineer, they can research colleges and see what colleges have that, that pathway for me, that degree for me. So then, of course, it is a place, a centralized place for contact information, college and career, interests, test scores, GPA, all of that thing. That is the component for the collaboration for families and students, counselors, administrators to all be able to have that one platform. And then the last slide. So as I said, it was, it's directly aligned to our strategic plan. Under Workforce and Life, we purposely prepare our students with the skills to navigate life beyond graduation. We had two strategies. Create clear guidance and indicators of what constitutes appropriate employability skills development and create and implement K-12 Career Development Plan. As I said, G C I S is no longer there. And I know the middle school, I talked with the counselor who organizes all the career activities and awareness activities for the school. And it's a struggle without having that platform. So she actually contacted me a few weeks back to see if we were still going to go through with this. And I told her we were going to present to the board again and go from there. So the Bridge Law, Building Resourceful Individuals to Develop Georgia's Economy, there I have listed what it requires, counseling, regularly scheduled advisement, career awareness, career interest inventories, information to assist students in evaluating their academic skills and career interests. And Naviance is a platform that will allow all that to happen very seamlessly. It also will allow our students, once they graduate from Coffey High School, to continue to go into their account and look at their information. So once we, as long as we have this program, they will be able to access their information. I will say that money was budgeted for this for last year out of federal money. It's still there. I've had the approval from my program manager to use it, to purchase it for this school year, which is F Y twenty-one. With our F Y twenty-one money, there's money there to budget it for F Y twenty-two. So the order that is, the other attachment in the line item tonight is a three-year order, but money is there for two years and I don't see where the money wouldn't be there for the third year. So it would be funded from federal programs, from type of program. Y'all have any questions?
I like it. I've been looking at it, I guess, for a while now. And one of the issues that I had as, as a parent, what my kids are going through, one of them just got done with high school, another come through, is being able to access this information and try to make sure that they're still on whatever pathway they need to be on, make sure that they've got, you know, this done, that done, you know, what are their test scores, what do they lack, what do they need to get, you know? And it's like, there's so many places you've got to go try to find this information or call and find out this person or tell a kid, try to go buy a counselor bar and see if you can find this. We've got stacks of master orders, trying to keep up this paper and that paper. And this will give you the ability to log on, get on there and have access to all that information in one place where you can track and make sure that your child's, you know, on track and doing what they need to do.
And that's the collaborative part of it.
Well, and that's what I'm saying, that's that there's a lot of other things to this, but that, that part of it in itself, you know, sold me with this is something that we need.
I will tell you that I've been working, the consultant that we were working with back in the spring, no longer is with the company, so I've been working with another guy who is actually a board member in his district in Virginia. And we, we did get a better price now, so just want to share that. So it might not look like a better price, but it is. I can show you the old order and show you that it is a better price. But I, there is training that comes along with it. It will be, I wish I could tell you that once approved, that it would just, all happen just like that, but there will be a training period and we'll have to get it implemented and that kind of thing. This order is for three years. The total cost for three years, you see, is ninety-five-thousand-seven-hundred-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. The first year is thirty-seven-thousand-five-hundred-seventy dollars and then thereafter is twenty-nine-thousand-seventy and then twenty-nine-thousand-sixty-nine-ninety-nine. The reason the first year is most expensive The reason the first year is most expensive is because we have to pay for the total curriculum, which is eighty-five hundred dollars upfront for the all three years. So that's why it's more expensive the first year.
About year four?
Year four would be starting over again. I just did it for three years. Usually what we do with that, Mr. Dowers, is at the end of the third year, we would ask for another proposal. And a lot of times, I'm not going to say all the time, but a lot of the times, they will come in at really close to the same price. If it's an increase, it's a very minimal increase because we've been a customer of theirs.
But we're not satisfied after three years?
That's right. We don't have to.
Well, I was going to say after four years, you'll know what's worth.
That's right. And there's, as I said, the money is already there for year one and year two, year three, and I don't foresee that being a problem with Title IV money.
So that does help you with compliance on the Bridge Act?
It does. It does. And that was one, that's been a concern of the middle school counselors, specifically the one who plans the lessons and things for all the career exploration, is having a resource. She actually did some training on her own this summer, hoping that we were going to be able to get it. And so she's, she's ready. She's sitting on go as soon as we get it.
Would this, would this be a complete platform for compliance, or are there other?
No. This, this offers everything, every component of the Bridge Law that I put on that PowerPoint, it checks those boxes.
This is something I'm excited our counselors are going to get, middle school counselors, the ninth-grade counselors, the high school counselors. When they saw this, they really got excited about it because it's going to help them do their job. And high school has changed a lot in the last ten years. And this is going to give them the system to help them manage all that change.
And this can be, I mean, it can be counselor-directed, teacher-directed, or student-directed. So it doesn't, a student could go on there and do a, do a lesson themselves. If they're interested in something, or if they go to the counselor and have a question, or their teacher, then they could go in there and do that, or parents. Anything else? Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the State Capital Outlay Application for FY twenty-two. Dr. Banks and myself and Ms. Yawn and Mr. Spikes met with our state facilities consultant, and we looked at our five-year facility plan. And after several meetings, we concluded that we were going to make application and pursue funding from the state for FY twenty-two. And I'd like to announce to the board that we were successful. They approved our FY twenty-two application, and we will receive, what are those numbers, Ms. Yawn?
The total state allocation for both elementary schools is approximately one point three million.
So we'll receive one point three million, and a portion will go to Ambrose Elementary School. Scroll down, Chan. Go all the way to the second to the last page. Go up. There you go. You'll see that Indian Creek Elementary School will receive for HVAC replacement, scroll down. Seven hundred and eight thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Of course, that is reimbursement, so we will have to do the work ourselves. So we'll have to have the money upfront, and then we can apply for reimbursement of up to seven hundred and eight thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars. And then for Ambrose Elementary School, six hundred and one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. So we're excited. We're going to do HVAC replacement. Those buildings are now between twenty and twenty-five years old. It's the original air-conditioning units are on those, those walls, those wall pack units that you see in the classrooms and such, so we'll be able to replace all those, all the HVAC in both buildings.
We have matching boards. We have to do.
We'll have a portion that we have to contribute. I think we have to, is it up to fourteen percent we have to contribute? But we'll have to have the money for the whole project upfront.
How much could that part be though?
It's going to be about one million six to one thousand.
I guess that was each block?
Yes, sir. And that's an estimate.
That, these are estimates.
Yeah, that's a high estimate, I would say, the local portion. All right. The Georgia Department of Education School Board Annual Reports. The board is required annually to complete the training plan. And the training plan has been completed, and we have to have board approval to submit this to the Department of Education. You'll see that includes the charter system governance training, the board member training at the annual conference. There's a very much likely that that conference will be virtual. That's what they are saying, but we will still be able to get our six hours of training. And then whole board governance training when we do our retreat, usually in February, we have a trainer come in and we receive six hours for that. And then we have the board member training, the summer conference in Savannah. Hopefully by then, it won't have to be virtual. But that is the training plan. And then the second item under that heading is the Training Report. This describes the number of hours that our board members received for their training. That we will submit. All right. If there's no objection, we will place those items on the consent agenda.
We've got some, some of that home line stuff that we've talked about. Do we need to do that? I mean, we don't, we don't, do we need to do that, the amount, the amount of hours? Or will, if they do this virtually at each conference, with those six hours, and we have a retreat, would that be enough? Or do we need to do some of that?
If we follow our plan, that would be enough hours, Rob.
Everybody has to have twelve, twelve hours to keep each and every board set.
But we'll get that without doing anything?
With the two conferences.
Okay.
Yeah. And then with, if you get six hours at each conference, and then you get six hours with our trainer, that's about plenty of hours. And then the two hours with the charter training. All right. So that's the Training Report. Mr. Dowers stepped out. We still have a core, you go, continue on.
Yeah.
We have audience participation. And we have Mr. Rudy Porter, who's here. Do you want to go through your?
Yeah, I've almost memorized it, but can you go through it for me?
All right. As far as, you don't, yeah, yeah, well, I think you were familiar with it.
I am, I am.
Let's see. "Person's desire to address the board during a work session should sign the audience participation list prior to the beginning of such meeting, be recognized by the chair before attempting to address the board and otherwise follow the published guidelines. As provided in such board policy, each individual shall be given five minutes to address the board. If there is a group that requests to address the board on the same or similar subject, the chair may select representatives to speak on each side of the issue. If a group is present and there is more than one spokesperson, a maximum of ten minutes will be allowed. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively, he or she should first contact the superintendent and the superintendent's designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution. Prior to seeking to address the board, the board will not hear oral complaints or criticisms regarding school personnel during public meetings." All right. Thank you, Mr. Porter.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a, one PowerPoint presentation I'd like to have it posted right now.
What is that?
I have one PowerPoint presentation I'd like to have on the screen.
Chan had mentioned that. I, I have not had a chance to look at it.
It's from your report. It's from your, it's from your public record.
Do you have a paper copy of it?
Yes. It's from your public record. It's, it's public record. It talks about personnel. It's from data from your report. I want the public to see it.
Well, you're welcome to go ahead and describe it and just, I've not, I've not had a chance.
Are you not allowed to present it like you did all of the other presentations? It's this.
Well, that's our employees that present.
Right from your report. That's the sheet I want the public to see.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I just, I have not seen that prior to tonight.
It's from your public record, I believe.
Yeah.
You produced it, didn't you?
I, I don't know. I don't.
Go ahead. Just, just go ahead and describe to her or read off whatever.
No, that's, I'll just make it part of my presentation. All right. I'm Reverend Gerald Porter, pastor of Shallow Mission at God's Church, and I'm the chairman of the election committee of the Coffee County NAACP. Board of Education, good evening. Sister Wilkinson, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Since my last visit with this board, a lot has happened, both locally as well as nationally. Our society has been under attack. Corona's virus numbers and its death toll continue to rise, now exceeding two hundred thousand. I am both grateful to God and thankful that in that number, no Coffee County students, teachers, or staff are in that number. The last time I stood before you, Dr. Lees and board, I stated emphatically that the Coffee County NAACP was not going anywhere. In fact, my grandson said, Grandpa, you say you ain't going nowhere. He said, that's not good grammar, so we aren't going anywhere. We're committed to working towards righting the wrongs committed against the citizens in our community. Our students, our students of color, continue to need to see themselves in the, in the adults around them. The society we live in makes it so hard for them. They have so many challenges before them. Challenges that their white counterparts will never have or understand. It is incomprehensible. That is why it is of the utmost importance that you, Dr. Lees, do more than just sit and look. As a leader, it is your responsibility to promote the success of all students by developing, advocating, and sustaining an academically rigorous, positive, and safe school environment for all. The leader focuses the success of all students by supporting, managing, and overseeing the school's organization and use of resources. Use of resources. Do what is necessary to balance your administrative and teaching staff so that it reflects the population of students. What you have in place and the way you secure teachers of color is not acceptable. It has never been acceptable. And just looking at your numbers, looking at the enrollment year for two thousand eighteen through nineteen, out of four hundred and fifty teachers, only fifty-five are of color. This is from your report. That's what I wanted to make a part of my PowerPoint presentation. Only fifty-five out of four hundred and fifty-five teachers are of color. And in the words of that late, great, rhythm and blues singer, Barry White, that's just not enough, baby. That's just not enough. Fifty out of four hundred and fifty is not enough. But we're going to be persistent. In this poem written by an anonymous called Press On, it says, "Nothing in the world can take the place of persistence." To persist is a verb meaning to continue firmly despite of obstacles to endure. Talent will not. Nothing is more common than unsuccessful men with talent. Genius will not. Unrewarded genius is almost a proverb. Education will not. The world is full of educated derelicts. Persistence and determination alone are inevitable. I've interviewed teachers who have taught in this system for over thirty years, and they say thirty years ago, they were being told, you can't find enough black teachers to increase the black population of teachers in our school system. Fifty-five out of four fifty is just not enough. And as I say time and time again, we can do better than this. I'm open to any question. And that's the, that's the visual aid I want to put out. I want the world to see that only fifty-five black teachers out of four hundred and fifty are employed in this system. Two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. Is there anybody questioning those numbers? Just not enough. Any questions for me?
I don't know.
You know Barry White, don't you? Sister Wilkinson?
Say it again. I, I couldn't understand that.
You familiar with that song by Barry White, "Just Not Enough"?
It's just not enough. It's not enough.
And you know, there's a group of pastors here, they, they have a flyer saying, local pastor. Well, I, I live here locally. I pastor in Tifft, but I'm a pastor of God, so I'll be here.
Thank you, Reverend Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Porter.
Just not enough.
I appreciate, I appreciate you, um, thanks, the board. Thank you.
The next person we have is Mr. Michael Newton.
Good evening.
How are you, Mr. Newton?
All right. I'm along with the pastor, so can we get five, we get the ten minutes?
Ten minutes.
Okay. Well, here's a, just one of the issues I think you all stated a while back as far as changing the boardroom meetings, because a lot of people feel that they can't come, not boardroom, but school board meetings because it's not enough room. Think, Mr. Lot, you said y'all wouldn't be changing the meetings, right?
Right now, we're going to play lobby, yes, sir. We are going to try to, kind of, so we've got something going out there. I don't know, blow TV and stuff to get some more people, but we need to have these meetings here where we've got access to all the stuff we need. Yes, sir.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, the middle school has the same thing that you have here because the Chamber of Commerce and a lot of those people use that same facility.
They don't have, they don't have their offices and stuff, and we have to go in the states. They have to have them go get information from us and stuff like that. They do not have access to all that.
But when you have a meeting, you're supposed to have all your documents.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, you're supposed to have all your stuff and have all your stuff with you when you go to a meeting. If you go to any meeting outside of Coffee County, you're going to have your documents with you. So that's one of the things, but then you changed the way you said that you wouldn't do it, but then you put yourself in place of being a double-minded man because when you look at it, then y'all just allow five football players and the whole football team to stay home, but y'all say any kids that want to participate in sports had to go to school, right? But then y'all just told them they can be homeschooled, and they're going virtual. So you didn't keep your word. And so now the middle school kids are still having to go to school and play football, but yet the high school kids get to stay home. So how does that work? Because those were your words, that any child, so it's, and being this a Title I school, like the lady said, it's federal funded money that takes care of this system. And so I reached out, and we reached out to Cogia, Mr. Mark Ilkard, who's over the accreditation for the school system, and the regional coordinator, Mr. Amanda Adams. Because you stated one thing, and there are some kids that want to play middle school football, couldn't because they're homeschooled. And then there's some in the high school that want to play football, but can't because they stayed home. And now you're telling the football players they can stay home so that you can save your football season, but not the kids and the teachers that's being exposed to COVID at school. And so I applaud Mr. Bull Brown for what he's doing. While we're not going to do the same things, because lady said again, we're all from Coffee County. We need to see about each other. For me, it's not black, white, brown, or yellow. It's about doing what's right. And so if you're going to do it for one, you need to do it for all. Other than that, this is a fair move.
That's true. That's so very true.
Now, James says you're a double-minded man if you lean one way or the other. We all say we're Christian. So, so what, do we believe the word, or do we create our own word when it justifies what we want? You know me, Dr. Lees, you know I'm a trick shooter. Yes, sir.
Also, still being concerned about the people that are not able to attend a meeting. I addressed that on last time. So now we want to make a recognition that, um... Oh, yeah, if we can have just a different organized meeting for the community, I know you said it's not a public meeting, but, you know, we still would like to be able to have people from the community to be able to attend meetings, so we can have like even month to month, a special organized meeting for the community to come and be a part of what's going on with the school system. That's, that's what we want to recommend.
We'll call out the names. Good evening to the school board, to the community. I want to call out the names of several of the parents and students who were in attendance at the last meeting. Ms. Francine Killbrook Thornton, Davia Lindsay, Anstrid Ingram, and Christopher Stinson. These individuals were referenced at the last meeting, Dr. Lees, and we talked subsequent to the meeting's adjournment about an incident that took place in terms of some type of vandalism that took place, and of course, a subsequent investigation, both in the homes of the parent and children that I've just mentioned, as well as in the schools. Ms. Killbrook was emphatic about, and very emotional about how her son was interviewed without her knowledge. I asked you, I encourage you, make sure that they get some, some support, counseling or something. And much to my surprise, as of this moment, the children are exhibiting post-traumatic issues and the parents are still upset. They have not been effectively serviced and supported with the school's resources, either in counseling or any other kind of support, which I find extremely disturbing. And I would like, by the next time we have met, that there's been some type of plan to address this matter, especially discerning the extent to which it is proper for a resource officer to interview a child without the knowledge of their parent, without the expressed consent of the parent, especially given the fact that they had given in-person consent in a preceding process. And it is important, I think, if an individual does not do what they're supposed to do with respect to proper protocol, and they should be met, held accountable in one way or the, whether it's administratively or what have you. Our youth and our young men, our young boys and our young girls need to be treated as children, and they need to be protected. When a child goes through some type of trauma in that way, it affects them for the rest of their lives unless it is effectively and immediately addressed. And so it is the concern of certain clergy that this be addressed extremely quickly. It's been a month, we talked at the last meeting, here we are again, and I, the young men are still exhibiting various ways in which the behavior has affected them. On a personal note, I am particularly concerned because I went through as a child something like that. I had a father with me who helped to intervene immediately, and, but I still needed support because it is important that we recognize that we should be protected regardless of where we are. And the schools and our homes ought to be places where we're able to engage in the educational process without any threat of being criminalized. These young men do not need to have that stigma on them and in their lives. They need that memory dealt with, they do not need to have that festering frustration because it becomes other, it exacerbates other kinds of behavior. Secondly, the young men, I understand, are also traumatized because they're being bullied, because they've decriminalized, others are looking at them as criminals, and they, the parents have also spoken to various school personnel. So I'm just asking that this be addressed immediately, that within the next five days, three, tomorrow, that these, that these students and parents be supported with the resources available in the school without costing themselves. They're considering counseling, but I don't think they should have to pay for it. I think they were traumatized in the school setting, I think the school system ought to make sure that they're taken care of. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I guess I still want to get some type of feedback on what's the difference of doing and not doing. Will the kids that want to play, they're able to play because in a Title I school, everyone has a, the right to have the sequel, I guess, the equal opportunity. So it's not an equal opportunity because they'll change the playing field in the middle of the school already started.
And this is the reason we don't get a back and forth in these meetings, because, and here's what I'm saying, because I don't know. I'll have to find out. We, you know, we, we made a commitment that if you were in-house, you could play sports and stuff like that, if you were virtual, you couldn't. If we've got kids that, that aren't, then, then I'll find out about that. But just sitting here and make comments on right now, you know, I, I don't know, let me look into that.
Appreciate it. Another baby for you.
Thank you.
You have an evening's active session?
No, sir, I don't have an evening's active session.
We don't have an evening's active session, then we will adjourn the work session and be back a little bit before the regular meeting.